It's six oh five PM and Treasurer Slavens is going to take roll call for us.
Warreninsky.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Seacrest. Slavens, good evening. And Snyderman.
Hello, everyone.
Great, thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Breninsky. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? You're making noises.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Great, so we're having a study session tonight and our first item is 2023 Roads Project and that will be opened up by Director Smith. Let me give you access here to share. Great. If access, okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you. Yes, so we're here tonight to talk about the five-year road plan. We started this a couple of years ago, so this is gonna go over kind of our current state of their roads, what we're anticipating for 2023, and then we've extended the plan out one more year to stay consistent to, and we'll present the 2027 tentative projects. We'll start by saying that we did meet with the Roads Advisory Committee on May 27th of this year. Things went very well. These microphones are a lot of...
Yeah, they're very touchy.
...today. We had real good discussion. They had some good ideas. You know, Trustee Foster was there. Trustee or Clerk Seacrest was there in attendance. I don't remember if anybody else was there or not, but we had real good discussion. We'll go through some of their comments as we go through the presentation tonight. I did print off copies for everybody that is in front of you and I'll just start going through the presentation. Thought we would start with Ford Road and the Boulevard Project. This is the one that we probably have the least control over because it is being rung by MDOT. We did have a meeting earlier this week with them. They're still stating that we're looking for anticipated construction to start in 2024. We're a little leery of that date because they have not yet even bid out for the right-of-way acquisition, real estate broker, to start, or contractor, to start that negotiation. So we could see that that date be pushed back, but according to MDOT, they're still looking at 2024. Any questions on the Ford Road project before I move on? Okay. Road improvement program for this year, these, I've listed up here are 2022 major road projects. Canton Center, obviously, if you can see, that's been a full reconstruction this year. If you haven't driven it, I encourage you to do so. They're doing fine work out there and that's a $5 million project. And then Warren Road is just getting underway. Well, I guess it got underway a couple of weeks ago, started, and that's just under a $1 million project. That project did take a change. That was just supposed to be a mill and resurfaced and the board did approve a change order to that project as we realized that the base was, we needed to do more work. So that is, that was increased almost $200,000. And then we have our local road program, $1.6 million in match work, working with the subdivisions, and $400,000 in unmatched work, which those, those associations and neighborhoods that did participate, I've listed in the packet here for you. So this is our current 2022 project list. Everything is going well there, working really well with the associations and the projects are working, are going well as well. I will say, in regards to the local match program, I was speaking with Charles just last week and we have enough projects in the pipeline, enough associations interested, that we have enough projects through 2025.
Jade.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. What, on a previous presentation, we talked about the enormity of Sunflower and the fact that they're like a lot of subdivisions put together and are we able to open up maybe to more projects in Sunflower than just one? I don't know. I only see one, but maybe there's more $200,000 project in Sunflower?
So we've had some initial discussion on that. It's really supposed to be one per associate. We haven't taken it too much further. We haven't had a lot more discussion because it would really be, when we're starting to build this list, it would, it would pretty, it would be pretty unfair to the other associations that they got bumped because of that, but I don't know. Bill, do you want to comment on it at all?
Well, you know, they haven't asked.
They haven't.
Certainly had some discussions about other ways we could help them, but nothing's really come up.
I just worry about them getting done. I mean, with all that they have to do over 20 years, 10 or 20 years.
Yeah. We, we have had some internal discussions about some really big problem areas in that subdivision and maybe it's not, maybe it's a program that's done outside the match program and it's just done with the road millage dollars to take care of some of our issues, very similar to what we dealt with on Canton Center. The ASR, they've got some ASR issues in that subdivision, so we may look at that a little bit separately and come back with a recommendation for approval on that.
And I think we're still hopeful the county may kick in on that Swanmere. You know, the Swanmere, the awful one off Beck is really the most difficult for them.
Well, that would be great, but yeah. I mean, I'd just be willing to entertain it personally as, you know, if you said, because they're so big. I mean, there are some subdivisions that are one row, you know, a cul-de-sac and I just can't equate that limit for them as the same as the limit for something as big as Glengarry or Sunflowers or something.
Yeah, we can continue talks with them and then definitely think of maybe some alternative ways to get more done in that, that particular sub, for sure.
How many homes are in there?
1,572.
You know that well.
Yeah, that's 10 times bigger than my...
It is.
The largest subdivision in the state.
Yeah.
So what are we doing with the 200,000 this time?
In, in Sunflower?
Yeah.
They're working on just various locations, kind of all. We work with the HOAs on scoping where.
Yeah, the scope for every subdivision is different depending on what is needed in that subdivision.
A lot of our subdivisions in Canton have ASR issues.
Yeah, I know the specific roads.
Yeah, they just have the Swanmere and Weathers. I forget the other location. They have that one really bad area.
Because my, my subdivision just connects to Sunflowers, so it's, I know like there are some roads there that are like really...
Yeah, I think they have 15 plus miles of road.
Yes.
It's very large.
All right. Go ahead, somewhere.
I was gonna say, the 2014 road, the subdivision road program, did Sunflower take part in that?
They did.
Okay.
That original one from, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
They take place in most every year.
That was that first one, the county match, yes.
Jade, what is being done with the unmatched work? What, what does that consist of?
The 400,000?
Yeah.
I'll let Bill speak to that, but most of it has to do with the storm drains and reconstruction there. Do you want to touch on that, Bill?
Yeah, the, when, when, when the millage passed, we had the program for matching, if you come in with funds, but then we wanted the ability to have some discretionary funds to use in, not only in these subs, because we use it in here, but we use it in other areas that are not in the program. And it's focused on drainage and catch basins, the lowest and the most expensive stuff to fix. So it's a way that we can target areas and we keep lists of when people call in about a catch basin in a particular sub. They're not in the program, but we can often go out and not fix everything, but at least show some progress.
Okay, thank you.
I was just gonna add on my comment. Even if at the bare minimum, we separated it out to North Sunflower and South Sunflower, giving them each a slot, you know?
And that's a really good idea and maybe we can have that conversation with the association. We haven't looked at it that way, but that's, that's a good idea.
Okay. All right.
The next slide shows the 2023, which Sunflower is not on, so...
Oh, jeez.
But I will say, I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, we had so many in line last year that we had all the slots filled for 2022 and 2023. So these were, these were the order in which they came in. And, and at some point, we have no more capacity, like, you know, from a construction, from managing the construction, the work, you know, the construction companies can't take on any more work. But, so you can see, we're within 50,000 of the same dollar amount as we are this year, almost $1.6 million for 2023. And so what we'll be doing is coming back to the board with an RBA for approval to move forward with all of these projects like we have in the past, just so we can get those bid and designed and ready to go for spring of 2023.
Are the ones that are only 50,000, is it basically because that's all their HOAs can afford or we...
Yeah, we, they dictate the dollar amount and then we work within that dollar amount to work on customizing their projects with them. Yep. And there are some that come in with the full 200,000. I believe we have a couple that come in year after year and they're ready to go year after year.
And Fairways West comes in every year with a $200,000 project and then they sign a second contract with us directly to pay 100% of everything above that.
Yeah.
So that's just the unique to that, that homeowner association.
What's, what's really neat is I think the associations are really working well with us on getting, on customizing theirs and they've been real, real good to work with, so. So that's the local match program. I'll go over this map real quick and then I'll turn it over to Bill to, to discuss all the major projects, but this is our Pazer rating map. This was probably some of the best news that's come out of the roads program since its inception. In 2018, the average Pazer rating was 5.27 and in 2022, the Pazer rating is 5.82. So it's actually gone up over a half a percent, which doesn't really sound like a lot, but in the world of roads, just as, as roads get better, other roads get worse. So this is a pretty significant for only having four years' worth of projects that have gone into the major roads in Canton Township since the millage has been passed. Obviously, you can see the colors indicate poor fare in good roads. Obviously, the purple is MDOT, but we still have quite a ways to go. There's still quite a red up there, but I know what Bill's gonna talk about next. Most of the projects over the course of the next two years are in areas where we have poor roads and are indicated in red. No, let Bill take it from here.
Sure.
Sorry, I have a question. On the map, it looks like it was printed on May 3rd. Is that right?
Yeah.
So was, that was before the Beck Road project by the county was done?
Yeah, yeah. We asked them to do this map and make Beck, Canton Center, and Warren 10s because they're all complete redo. So yeah, that, this is what it will look like in a month.
Okay, so that's reflecting the county work on Canton, on Beck that's being currently done. Okay, all right, thank you.
Good catch. So we'll walk through the five next years. We haven't changed a whole lot. This 23 remains about the same as we had. We're gonna do Lily and Lots, mile-long sections from Michigan to Palmer. And I would note, the, the other unique thing about those two locations is we're going to try to do either one or two extended shoulders that would be turned into a multi-use path bike lane. People walk on the shoulders anyway.
Oh, great.
We thought those, given the nature of Lily and Lots, it'd be very difficult to get sidewalks in. An extended shoulder would give us a lot of room for, you know, pedestrians and bike traffic. So that's, that's what's unique. And then we have done some preventative maintenance. We did some in 19 and we did some in 20. That's going back and doing crack sealing, doing small fixes. But for 23 and then every other year, I think I have it on a, on a odd year cycle, we want to go back and look at all these projects we've done in the past three years and do preventative maintenance on them. I want to keep Canton Center good. I want to, I want to keep Warren good after we've done it. So that's gonna be a routine progress process now and we're gearing up for that. We're gonna start looking at all of our old projects from the past three years.
What about Hamford and Salts, which we did?
Oh, yeah. They'll be on there. Yeah, I want to look at those two and, and if there's anything that's come undone, we'll, we'll hit it. So that's on the odd years. And then if we switch to 24, we've got Sheldon from Michigan Avenue South. We actually have that on the board for approval of design next Tuesday and that's gonna be a little more extensive project because it's very poor drainage and we'll have some state drain involvement. But that road is a county primary now. We increased it or we, we made a petition to make that a primary road and it's in very poor shape. Beck South from Cherry Hill to US 12, that is on our list for 24. We really haven't scoped that one in great detail yet. And then the other project is Geddes from Michigan to Denton. Haven't scoped that one out in great detail yet, but that's what we're planning for 24. In 25, we tentatively have a Canton Center project, which we thought would integrate with some planned safety money, but it seems that that money is not quite available right now. So now this is three years ahead, so we'll have to revisit it probably next year. Canton Center Palmer to US 12 is a, is a significant road. It is actually part of the national highway system. It is master planned to be five lanes at some point and we certainly would like to look at that in the near future. The other program in 25, again, we have the preventative maintenance. We have Salts from Canton Center to Ridge, so that's a fairly significant two miles. It was built probably 20 years ago and would be great to rehabilitate that. And then we also show in 25, a potential intersection improvement to be determined. And on 26, we have Cherry Hill, Ridge to Beck. So we're moving into the west area of the township. Hopefully by now, we'll be building a boulevard and we won't want to be near Ford Road. We've also got Denton from Cherry Hill to Salts. These are pretty far out, about four years from now. Again, I show an intersection improvement maybe in 26. And then if we move to 27, we really only have one project right now that we're certain and that is Hagerty, Warren to Joy. So that is a project that was originally slated for this year, but we moved it, given the nature of 275 and the detour routes. So I'd say, you know, I think we're, we're pretty happy with this list and I'm sure it will change in a year or two. But, but this fills out most of our budget and then the last two pages are just some of the changes from what you saw last year. In particular, we removed that Hagerty project from this year.
The one for Canton Center Palmer to US 12, that includes the widening for that, correct?
Right, so there is a long-term project in the regional transportation plan to widen Canton Center. The regional transportation plan is more of a wish list and it is known, we've had some correspondence just in the past month or two about a potential project there, so we would like to shake loose that, but it's nothing we can predict right now. It's a, it's a busy road and, and having a center turn lane on Canton Center right there would be very, very good, given the schools and churches.
Yeah, there's a, there are a bunch of schools and like the churches, the Sikh temples, another temple over there. They, they always talk about having a middle lane there too.
Right. So we'll pursue that.
What was that one?
The Canton Center from Palmer to Michigan Avenue, you know, you have this, there's a charter school there, there's a church, there is the Sikh temple, there's another temple over there. So they all keep asking about having a left lane or a light there or something like that, so we'll help them.
And we can still, you know, continue talks with the county. Obviously, that was fruitful with Canton Center. So, you know, we, we put something on a list and we say we want to address it and then we kind of go after it. So I'm not sure how often we'd be successful, but it worked once, so we'll try it again.
Can I ask a question about the county? I know we go through this every year, but do we know when they will release their upcoming road projects for the next couple of years? I'm thinking because all of ours are in South Canton and I don't want them to do what they did this year with Beck and it interfered with like detours and traffic planning for residents. So just wondering how we're working with them on that.
Yeah, they, they're, they keep their list pretty close to the chest and don't release it until right before they're starting to do it. I'm hopeful that we're gonna have better relations with the county. There's been some movement down there and I think we've already seen better communication with their public works division. So I think we could, specifically in Canton, because we're so active in creating our own road projects and making sure that we're planning out accordingly, that they have to come to the table. So I think that we could, we could see some progress there, but unfortunately, I don't, I don't know when they would release anything for 2023.
We're gonna work on them and hope that they get better.
Yes.
You know, they, they have two projects actually we know of. Hannan, north of Van Born is actually a federal project for next year. And then we have, I think, 20, 2.5 million in the till for federal aid for 24, which is the Hagerty Boulevard. So that's commitment in the future. So those are the two we know of. All the other ones, I, you know, self-perform, so-called. That's what...
So they're planning to do the Hagerty Boulevard in 24 and MDOT's planning to do, oh...
The, the funding is coming from them, but it'll be all part of the MDOT, it'll be all part of that same project.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thanks.
Do we know anything, any thoughts like what intersections you're thinking about?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
Yes, we, we actually, in fact, I just sent Jade and Dave, we have the initial reports for three intersections, alternatives analysis. Sheldon Palmer, Sheldon Geddes, US 12, and Beck and Ford. So we're gonna be going through those with our consultants, meeting and having a kick, kind of an initial meeting with the state and the county, hopefully mid to late August. Look at all the alternatives with those agencies and then start to come to an agreement on what would be the selected alternative at each location. And we have costs, agreed to the alternative. You just, I just sent them to you.
Yeah, we just got those this week.
I, I've been looking at them and staring at them and, you know, we're gonna get with the agencies and then we'll all come to an agreement at some point. And then we'll have projects that we can shop for funding, shop for approvals, you know, but bringing the state and the county in along with this process, through the process, that's, you know, that's gonna be key.
Yeah. And actually, the county, both of the agencies are actually waiting for the same report that we received this week, so specifically MDOT. We're in constant contact with Garetti, who is well aware of these intersection projects, specifically Beck and Ford and then Sheldon and Geddes, that intersection there, so in Michigan Avenue. So she's anxiously waiting for this report too, so then we can look at what they're predict, what they're recommending and then move forward with how we put the projects together.
Yep.
And Supervisor Graham Hudek's been very vocal of the county and saying that we're willing to try anything in Canton Township, including a roundabout. Yeah, so we'll be the first one in Wayne County.
The fourth project is Denton, Salts, and Ridge, which we've put on hold until they build their signal, then we'll convert it.
But the light is going in this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Fall, yeah.
Yeah.
So a million dollars that you have in intersection improvements on some of these years, that's separate than these three that you're talking about or?
I just pulled out a million and said, maybe in 27, we'll be building something.
But these three hopefully are sooner than 27?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I hope, hopefully one of these, we start, maybe two. Depends on if we get the agencies to partner with us and come up with some...
It's interesting that we just received a report this week and we scheduled this session for tonight, so we haven't even had a chance to digest any of the information yet, so.
I've, I've been looking at it for a few weeks. I, you know...
Oh, you didn't? Okay. See, now I see where I stand.
But, but the idea is, we're on track as far as in the fall, hopefully, we have some, some projects and some decisions and that will certainly be something the board will wanna, wanna, wanna see.
And I guess the last thing, just to kind of wrap up, is we're always making the interactive roadmap better, so check back on there. We've simplified it a little bit this year. It was getting really messy, so we're always looking for feedback on that, so please let us know. But with all of that, that was what we had for the roads and would love to, to see how everybody feels with that, because if everybody's in agreeance, then we'll be bringing RBAs back before the board to move forward with design and get these projects lined up for 2023, specifically the 23 ones. 24, 25, 26, and 27, we've got time and we'll go through the same process again next year, just like we did last year.
Sounds good.
All right, great. I know everybody's really waiting for the next discussion, I know.
Yes.
And Trustee Ganguly's not gonna like what I'm handing out because it's paper, but I know.
The next item is a proposed sidewalk gap program.
Yeah, this is a presentation that did come in, so I have to take this.
Thanks.
So while Dave's handing that out, I'll go ahead and get started. We put together a presentation tonight for everybody. This is not the full report that you received in, in your email. That was a little bit more comprehensive along, and longer, so we put this together to kind of go over some of the highlights and, and clearly, we're looking for feedback on this process. I have to say, kudos to engineering, planning, and their interns who spent many, many, many hours on putting this plan together. The research that had to go into this, when you're starting a program like this, is, is huge. And I think you can see, once we dive into some of the numbers, you, you'll realize what they uncovered and there's a lot more gaps than I, than I actually thought there were in Canton. So, you know, obviously, we started this... Oh. Sorry, it's on my screen. Sorry about that. Yes. Okay, so sidewalk gap program. This was a Board of Trustees' goal set back in 2021. It's taken us this long to get where we're at, but we did uncover, we did a high-level assessment of the gap locations and uncovered almost 54 miles of missing sidewalk. And, and I have to stress, this is, the priority is sidewalks. I know there's gonna be lots of conversation and we'll end up talking about the trails and the I-275 overpasses, but we really had to take this and break it down and say, how do we compartmentalize this? And what Canton Township can really control and what we can control is the sidewalks. That's, that's all us. We have to work on obtaining right-of-way. We work on the design. We work with the county. We, we manage the construction. When we start to look at trails and the overpasses, that's when we start working with other agencies and there's other grant dollars that are involved. So when we're looking at trails, obviously, there's grants through the state. There's other types of grants that we can secure. And then anything we're gonna do over 275 is gonna involve MDOT. And we've already started conversations with them, but the concentration for this program, which I think is the, the meat of the program, is the sidewalks and connecting all of those locations that don't have sidewalks, that have goat trails or there's nothing. Schools have been built when, and there was no gap that was filled in next to the school between that and a subdivision or a main, a main intersection. So please keep, kind of keep that in mind as we go through this. And again, obviously, we, and I think when you see the end of this presentation, you'll see how we're incorporating building sidewalks and connecting them to our existing trails, because we do have some current projects that we're doing that with. So I'm gonna let Bill go through most of this. A lot of it's numbers and I'll let, I'll let him go.
You'll, you'll see some discrepancies if, if you add up all these numbers. Tried to separate between the major roads and MDOT, so you will. If you add these numbers up, you will find that they do not add up in every instance. We're still refining this big network of GIS data, but essentially, if you look at the major roads and how much existing sidewalk there is and how many gaps there are, this is a pretty good representation. 53 miles on the major roads. If you look at MDOT, they're around nine, nine and a half miles. This is always changing. As, as Patrick will tell you, we're adding a significant amount of sidewalk right now on, on Michigan Avenue and other commercial areas that are being built. So it's always a changing number, but it's getting smaller. And the other key, aside from 53.8 miles of, of gap... And the other key, aside from 53.8 miles of, of gap on the major roads, 48 locations that are bridges or water crossings. We've assessed some of them and we're going to assess all 48, but right now, those would be categorized as the difficult crossings, whether it's a bridge or enclosing a ditch. And then the, the other key look, issue with looking at our network of 50-plus miles is how much of those miles would we need easement on? And it's actually most, most of the major road areas will need an easement from the property owners. So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a fairly large program. We've filled a little more than half of our sidewalks on the major roads, but we have almost 50 miles still throughout the community. And, uh, you know, we just, we'd, we'd never known that before, before last fall or winter, when our interns did a lot of fieldwork on this. So that's, that's where we are. You can see the size of the program and, you know, uh, it's quite large. 50 bridges, 50, close to 50 miles of sidewalk is, is a lot. And early on last spring, we actually looked at the locations, all the, almost 300-plus locations of discrete gaps. And as you can see, at that time, we had about 12 parcels and locations where we, we categorized them as easy. They really won't be easy, but we don't need land. Uh, and those are facilities that we own, things like, things near our parks, things near facilities we already own. Most of the other gaps are medium or hard. Very few of them do we have the land or easements available. We will have to go through that process with the property owners. So we have approximately 45 miles, more than that actually, of, of, of locations where we will have to obtain easements and do designs and ultimately fill those gaps. So that's just a way to think about it. And unfortunately, most of them are in the hard category. So, but it doesn't mean we can't do them. We'll, we'll do them. So here is, uh, here's sort of the most current estimate. And a lot of this was done earlier this year and it gives you an idea of the scope. You have, on the sidewalk gaps, the 47 miles, if you will, I simplified the number to be able to calculate these. You know, just looking at current dollar costs, there's $27 million. That's a lot. That's, that's a lot. Uh, and if you look at the bridge locations, those are even more variable. Because some of these may not be a large bridge, they may be small. Some of these bridge or water cross locations may be enclosing a drain and covering it up and putting pipe in the ground, which is also very expensive. But it gives you an idea, with 48 locations of water crossings, we could encounter significant cost. Those are several hundred thousand dollars each for a bridge. Uh, and then the next slide actually shows some very, very rough easement costs based on best case and worst case of, of obtaining easements for, uh, for all of these hundreds of parcels. So I, you know, I, 13 to 17 million to buy easements from several hundred parcels. I'd ask you not to rely on these greatly. They're very, very rough. And remember, these will be, all of these costs will be spread out over a number of years. So the totals here, 55 and 58, uh, you know, I, I, I think, uh, one of the, a famous investor once said, you don't need to weigh the man to know that he's fat. And it's, it's big. It's big. If it's 55, it's 58, if it's 60, that's still a huge program. You like that?
That was a good one, Bill.
I mean, it's true. I mean, am I, am I going to nitpick over 50 million that I'm going to spend over however many years? It's big. It's a big program. But, you know, the funding has been set at half a million and, and we're going to take a big, big bite out of this.
Yeah, so just to kind of piggyback on that, it's a huge dollar. It's just going to take many, many years to accomplish. So we know we've got $2 million to kind of kick this program off over the course of the next few years by 2026. Um, we've identified some projects and some priorities that we'll get into next. But I was speaking earlier today to the supervisor and the clerk and the treasurer and kind of on an annual basis, like we do the roads, coming in and saying, okay, what's our gap plan for the next year? And putting together kind of a five-year plan like we did that with the roads. Um, it's probably going to be the best way to tackle it. I think as you see, as we go through this presentation, a lot of our priorities is going to be taken up with the school zones to kick, to start with. And then connecting the sidewalks to our existing trail network too. So, yeah. And that gets us to the criteria for how we actually prioritize these gaps.
Yeah, in the report, it goes into some detail on looking at locational destination-type things, whether it's a school, commercial, or one of our trails. And then also considering density of population. So you sort of have this two, two levels. So if I have a, if I have a location way down in the southwest corner where there's hardly any population, that's not going to rank as high as something at, at say Morton, Taylor, and Warren, you know, very built-out areas. So that's, uh, at the top, we've got densities, we've got gathering places, so your commercial and your institutional uses. We look at foot traffic, certainly when you see goat trails and, in areas you know that they're being heavily used. One of the things that's, we're going to get into is, for instance, when you say there's a gap and they say there's a bridge needed, in some cases, there's a bridge needed on both sides of the road. And those decisions are not going to be easy to make. When, uh, you know, we say we want to target the easy gaps, I think by the end of this year and into the winter, as we dig into these 300-plus locations, we're going to get a lot more detail. We're going to find out which ones are going to be easier to target. And can, the last one is consideration of complaints. We do keep track of those. We've had a number that have come up on, uh, bridge locations that we're definitely taking into consideration. So that's roughly how we're going to prioritize. There's a lot more detail in the report on, on those steps.
I'm sure half of those complaints have come from me.
No, I didn't have any registered from you, Steve.
Not officially.
They, they come in. Erica will tell you which complaints we get. We get a lot. So looking at our priorities as far as putting the schools at the top, uh, we first, at first I, I, I had the interns say, look at everything within a half a mile of the schools, and it blotted out the entire community. So that doesn't help when you're trying to prioritize 50 million in work and you're only going to do a few percentage. So this gives us a, a better idea if you go at, at a quarter mile. And Erin, our intern who's here tonight, she calculated quickly the number of miles within those circles of, of maps, of, of, of gaps. And it's 8.76 miles? So that's a significant, significant amount of all the gaps right near the schools. Some of them, as we analyze them, we're not going to pay. We're not going to pay for the one that's right in front of the school where they own the property, I mean, unless we want to. But there's certainly a lot of other areas around the schools that we can address. We've got, uh, we actually, there's another school that just opened on, uh, on Geddes, between Sheldon and Canton Center, that we need to add in here. Uh, that opened this, uh, this season, I believe, last season.
Last year, yeah.
Last year. I don't think we had it on here. And I wanted to say there was another school, but I think, I think we have them all on here except, except for the Stark Academy. So it's a lot, 8.7, uh, 8.7 if you're doing 500 to 600,000 per mile, you're easily at four to five-plus million to fill those gaps in the circles. And then the other thing that Erin calculated was how many bridge locations are within these circles? And I believe there's 16. So there's a lot of work just near the schools.
And this will take us, you know, clearly partnering with Wayne County and also the school district itself. I know this is a priority for Josh Meyer with the schools. So we'll get together with him when we get this program blessed by the board and say, okay, here's our priorities and how can we work together to accomplish some of these, these gaps?
Who's doing what? I mean, there's certainly some grant opportunities we already started to talk about and what would be appropriate for a grant. Uh, and, uh, you know, that's, that's the number one priority. Beyond that, uh, our second priority, I think, is connection.
I think Kate had a question.
Oh.
Sorry, I just, um, I want to emphasize that it's going to be really important to talk to the schools, all the various schools about this. Um, for school districts that provide busing, that could affect who is being bused. It might, you know, I'll use myself as an example. We live within the 1.5 miles attendance zone for bus, for walkers, but we live on the east side of back, south of Cherry Hill. There's no sidewalk, so we were bused. But if there's a sidewalk there, that could potentially lead to some children being able to walk, which I, I, I wanted my kids to walk. I thought it would be great. When I was a kid, I walked to school and it was awesome.
Uphill both ways?
No, not uphill both ways, but I could walk home for lunch, which was really nice when I was really little. And my mom would have a nice lunch plate for me, so.
It's interesting you say that because one of the so-called easy gaps is on back at Cherry Hill, you know? And that's one that, you know, how, how will we fill that? Because not only is it our own property, it's right next to the school.
Yeah.
So it's interesting.
Yeah, I was thinking about that when I saw it.
Yep.
I have a question on this. So how are you prioritizing in this? It's a lot of miles there, so how are you deciding?
We haven't decided that yet. We have come up with how many miles are within those circles, but that's a very good question. And we're going to be trying to come up with a program, how do I prioritize an elementary school versus a middle school? Versus a high school? I, I don't know. I don't have an answer to that now. We do know where all the gaps are. And we're also going to be drilling down on each of the properties. There's several hundred properties associated with all these gaps too. So I don't have an answer, but I hope by the end of this year, we'll be, we're going to have to figure out how we prioritize one school to the next.
I think.
I think the districts can, can help with that too.
Yes.
Yeah, Michael, have you had something? Um, I think one, one point is, when we look at the heat map, I was thinking there's a couple of areas, like Lots and Ford, that currently is very low density. But if things occur, um, in accordance with like the master plan and the proposed zoning and development that we know, like that's an area where, you know, currently there's zero to 237 people and that might skyrocket to a, a thousand or so, right? Depending on, on what happens in the next 10 years. So I would just, um, as we move through, if we're going to kind of use a rubric of density, maybe like we do with the PESA rating, try to keep that as fresh as we can every, you know, five to 10 years or something like that as we. Because it, clearly this is going to be a long-range plan as opposed to a short-range plan. That was my only point with that. My second question, this is a question I don't know the answer to. We've talked in the past about a substantial number of our gaps existing. And a lot of, you know, there's a number of reasons why we have existing gaps. One of them are those 48 watercourse bridges that we had talked about over county drains. And we have, um, I've seen communities tackle them in a number of different ways. Um, and we have tackled them in a couple of different ways too. In some instances, you put a pedestrian bridge for whatever that cost might be, a quarter of a million dollars or more, half a million, depending, probably now. And then kind of run that over the watercourse. On Hagerty, um, on the east side, over, um, between Palmer and Cherry Hill, we have the sidewalk cut in to the apron and then run adjacent to the road and then cut back out. That seems to be a very low-cost solution. And then I've seen instances where, um, it looks like when they put the culvert in, they added some extra room and just put dirt over that so that. And I was wondering if we know Wayne County is going to be doing a road repair to a culvert or a bridge. Would we potentially say, if you're replacing the culvert, would you get one that's got six or eight feet more? So that we could enclose that and run the sidewalk over it? Because that feels to me like it might be substantially cheaper than buying and engineering a standalone bridge. While I do think the bridges, many communities, Novi, for example, has some beautiful wooden bridges when you see those things. They look gorgeous.
You, you hit the nail on the head. Because when we, when we first characterized and saw the 48 locations, we, uh, two or three months ago, we said, we, we want to get an initial grouping that we can look at for grants in the near future. So we actually set up a program and started to assess all the 48 locations. And one of the issues is, we want to figure out, is it possible to build that pedestrian connection on the existing structure? For instance, Canton Center over the Rouge, just south of here, was constructed with the sidewalks in place. And then Erica, over the years, connected the sidewalk in both directions. So trying to understand, not only is the bridge wide enough for a potential pedestrian connection on the existing bridge, but is it a bridge that the county is probably going to be repairing in the next five or six years, 10 years? I don't want to touch them if they're going to be tearing it down. And, uh, there's a couple of bridges that were just constructed over on Beck Road for, by MI Homes, just north of Geddes. So those are the types that is sort of the, sort of the last resort if we can't do something on the structure itself. Now, we're not going to sponsor widening and expanding a bridge, but if I know the county's going to do it in three years, you know, we're, we're, they don't have anything in the near future. We've been trying to get that out of them. But as we move through the program, definitely a consideration.
Around the school zones too is important. This year especially, we, we experienced, at Plymouth Canton Schools anyways, that they would shut down busing for certain segments because they didn't have the drivers. So it put more traffic on the road, more congestion with parents driving kids. And so, yeah, that would be a good reason to speak to the schools to kind of find out where their priorities are.
Yeah, and they're sending out, asking people to request if they need busing next year because so busing will become an optional thing from next year, so. Probably talking to schools. And we also had a big group of parents coming in for the high schools, remember, talking about it.
The busing?
No, for the sidewalks, remember, there was those that came here and.
Right, around the park, as we know, yes.
I was going to say, the, so the, the gap over at that Palmer and Lots intersection, man, that's like a, it's like a gap city over there.
That's a big school.
Gap on gap on gap, right there surrounding that, uh, that school.
Yeah, they brought that up to the.
Or the school in the school map?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, would you say Palmer and what?
Lots.
Palmer Lots.
And then you have the piece of Lots all the way down to Michigan where we hope to get, uh, that, that's one of the ones we're looking at this year for expanded shoulder.
Now, what's interesting is I see like a hypothetical situation. If you were to look over at, um, at Denton, where you have the Charter School there, at Denton and Geddes. That's an area where you have an educational institution with a substantial amount of gap. But when I look at our existing gap, which is astronomical, most of the gap closures in Canton have been a direct result of a public benefit attributed to like a PDD. And I would, and I know, uh, people are looking at the property to the north and to the property to the south and they would more than likely be putting in developments there, that would more than likely be PDDs, that would more than likely, as a part of the public benefit, have a sidewalk. My assumption would be that probably would not, or we probably are building into, when we, or when we strategize which gaps we're going to start closing, we might try to come up with like a, that's, it's reasonable to believe a developer is going to put in that sidewalk and so we shouldn't attempt to attain, obtain easement and, and pay for the infrastructure that we know will organically come.
And like in the case of the assisted living on Ridge and Ford that just came in about two or three years ago. We can't tell them directly what is their public benefit. They have to come to us and say, here's a public benefit. We said, you've noticed that half a mile of sidewalk on the north side of Ford?
Right.
And they did it. Patrick has several locations right now that, that are filling in gaps in the next year with commercial properties. So the other thing, if you look at the entire gap map, is yes, there's 48, 53, depending on how you count it. But there's large areas, for instance, the industrial areas. We're not going to be touching those in the next 10 years. The areas down by, you know, uh, Michigan and, and the railroad tracks and Hagerty, you know, although there certainly are some population areas, some of those are going to be excluded. We probably won't be working in the industrial subdivisions anytime soon. So once we can pare that down a little bit, hopefully by the end of the year, we have a smaller list of 30 miles or 40 miles, you know? And then what is realistic that we would do? But yeah, that's a, we, I. But yeah, that's a, I call them in the report, I think, developable properties. I invented a word. But it's true. We are not going to fill those because I know there's developers looking at all those parcels, definitely.
I just had a couple of comments on the conversation that we're going on. I think trustee Gengouli had a question about priority and how we prioritize these. And obviously, this is how we're going to prioritize those. But even within the school zones, then we're going to prioritize within the school zone based upon the other criteria. So, and then clearly where are the easy gaps that would take little to no effort to fill? Those might be, you know, low-hanging fruit that we're going to do. And then unfortunately, it's going to come down to funding. We're going to be able to, we have to see what we can do on an annual basis. And I think that comes back to what I said earlier, where we're going to put this plan together and then every year come back to the board and have this kind of discussion going, okay, here's what we think is the priority for this year. Is everybody on board with that? And then just work it right into our budget. And then the other thing, and Bill kind of touched on it, but we are already in talks with Wayne County about their bridge program in Canton. Every bridge in Wayne County is under scrutiny right now. We're very happy with the Lily Road Bridge that they did down by Michigan Avenue. We'd love to see them replicate that throughout the township, but I'm not sure that'll happen. But we are actively talking with them about what is their next bridge they're going to replace? And how does that work into this program? And just like the roads, we don't have that list. So we'll continue to work with them and continue to try and see what we can get accomplished there. Want to move on to the-
You know, in the, in the report, there's a handful of locations that we are already either working on or are very well-known that we've talked about in the community for a number of years. These are some of the active projects. Let's, the Cherry Hill, the one that Dan McCoslin is, we're working with him on. That one, and we also rolled that into the other ITC gap over on Denton. The board just approved last week to add on that one, which is going to be, the gap over on Denton meets a lot of criteria. It's next to a school and it's in our village area. And so this one is a pretty big gap. This is both sides of the road. And because we're there and we're going to be moving dirt, we're going to try to figure out how to fix that drainage issue that persists there every winter. It may be fairly easy to fix, but this would be the time to fix it.
When would this, when is, what's the timeline on this?
So this one, we just initiated engineering on. And the one on Cant, the one on Cherry Hill, we have drawings on. I actually submitted those to ITC two weeks ago and they need to call me back. So we're already in talks with ITC on these. I don't know, I know their process is long. They're like Edison. I don't want to say next year. I would hope I could do one of these next year. They're not complicated engineering-wise. They're just not. So that's my hope.
This particular one here in Denton would tie in with the other ITC trail that we briefly have been talking about, that we have tentative drawings on.
Yeah, they have my plans for Cherry Hill now and I will be making application for them. And, you know, I think they were surprised that I sent them the plans right away. This is a trail. There's only one trail in here that I put in here for, sort of for example. This was that parcel we purchased a couple of years ago. And I know we wanted to build a trail from Lily to Floden. So Jade knows after this meeting, we're going to be issuing a series of requests for proposals to retain different professional services. And one of them would be related to bridges and trails because those are kind of a unique type of civil engineering activity. This location, a bridge location on Sheldon would be included. We have four bridge locations.
With the floating connector?
And the floating, that's the floating park connector.
Just briefly, when you, when you get to Lily Road, there's like a chain link fence there. My assumption is if we're going to run a trail there, we're probably going to have to remove part of that or hopefully, hopefully all of it and replace it with like the-
Well, the bridge is there now?
Yeah, replace it with maybe one of the beautiful green ones that we have over here by the township.
Yeah, it's kind of ugly. I've been out there.
Yeah, it doesn't look, yeah, I mean, in general, the chain link doesn't look as good. I know previous boards have been very like deliberate about when possible intentionally pulling out chain link and putting in those kind of metal, less concrete, less chain link.
Is this one on the Sheldon Road Bridge that you-
Sheldon, north of Michigan, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great because it's like right now a bridge to nowhere in terms of the sidewalks. But yeah, I was on the Denton Road one biking the other day or last week. And someone was passing me running and I just thought, you'll have a sidewalk soon. I wanted to shout out to him. But I always thought at least on that one, the fire station's right there. So if I ever get hurt or something, I'm riding on the street.
Some of the ones in the report are some of the ones we've talked about for a long time. There's also two pedestrian crossings, the crossing at Cherry Hill Village at Roosevelt.
Yeah, right.
We've talked about as far as a trail crossing, not a lot of, hopefully not a lot of cost, but approvals from the county. The other pedestrian crossing is at Denton and Proctor, near our Indy Park. And getting that quarter, half a mile of sidewalk in, up Denton and across, and then taking advantage of that new bridge that crosses the Rouge River right there, you know, on Proctor to the west. Those are just two, they're, we've had them on our list for a long time. They're not formally gaps, but you know, pedestrian crossings is something we want to consider. You know, whether it's a hawk or some other type of full signalized intersection.
Great. So with that, that's, that was a real high-level overview of the comprehensive report that was sent out. And obviously, we can answer any questions, take any input and continue, continue to work on this.
Anybody for this? Any more input?
I want to say thank you so much. It was very, I read the whole report and it was very good, very informative. And I do appreciate all of the thought brought into this and how you're going to come back to us on a year-to-year basis because things will change. Something that's a priority today may not be tomorrow. We might have builders put something, a sidewalk in for us. So I do appreciate all the hard work that you've done. Thank you. This is excellent.
I think picking between the schools is going to be the toughest.
Yeah, that's where we'll have to work with the schools and say, well, we'll see, you know, how many total miles are around each school. But then from there, say, which one's the priority? But yeah, that will be, that will be tough.
That's right.
I don't really have any input, but I will just say thank you for the work done on this. I think the best thing that you did is identify the problem and so now we know how to fix it. So thank you for all of that and I look forward to hearing what's next.
I'd love to hear that because that was kind of, when we got the results back, we're like, oh, well now what do we do? But it was just so mammoth. I do, I do appreciate that. And I think this is something, a program we can continue to make better and tweak.
Yeah, I want to echo Summer and Diane. I read through the whole report, the big report, and was really impressed. I like how reasonable it is, I mean, considering that we have very unreasonable gaps, the amount of gaps, and also the intentionality that you put into it. So thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, this is a very impressive document. I can only imagine how much work went into this. But all of the information, the presentation, it's very quality. And I think this will lead to like very intentional strategic decisions going forward. And so I'm like really grateful that we did this. This is amazing. So good job to everybody involved and yeah, thanks for the, thanks for the hard work. This, it is intimidating, but again, it's like, you know, you take one step at a time. And after a while, one day we'll realize, one day we'll be just as connected as, you know, the communities to the east of us.
So Stephen?
Yeah, thank you, everyone. It really feels like we're all in this together now. I mean, this has been 10 years. I've come to Bill's office and said, where's that big map that you have? And now it's all online and, you know, you have different ways of slicing and dicing it and looking at it. And also on the online one, I appreciate now I can zoom in and see the road names and everything, which was a problem in committee that, when we talked about it. And so two questions I had, one was specifically, I think we allocated $500,000 this year. What's that $500,000 this year being spent on?
So I'm working on a spending plan. You know, if you have a $50 million problem and you're spending 500 a year, you're doing 1% of the problem. So what I want to do is I want to, clearly there's a lot of engineering design that we need to initiate. We're going to have three big RFPs going out on different aspects of design and land acquisition. But I'm sure you don't want to spend it all on engineering next year. I want to find, we have some of those easy locations where we can get in significant miles of gap. The Beck Road gap is an easy one as long as we can appease the golf course. The ones on Lily and Lots that we're going to do next year with the road program, I view those as huge, being able to get those miles out of the needed sidewalk network, you know, if we can build those trails. So you think about how many miles we could do with just those projects alone. It's, yeah, it is kind of daunting, I guess.
And I think from a budgetary standpoint, I can work with Wendy on this too. But I think if, because the $500 was allocated a little bit after the first of the year and because there's so much prep that has to go into it, some of that may carry over to 2023. So you may see a bigger program as we kick off 2023 in addition to what we are allocated next year.
Is there potential for federal dollars or anything like that? I don't know if there's, I know we thought about that, but-
For sidewalks, we just got, we're getting awarded through the state. Our representative Ranji Puri and voted on also by Dana Polhanke, they're giving us, we're getting $750,000 for sidewalk gaps.
Oh, great.
We're also getting road funding from the state. So Governor Whitmer signed that, so we really thank our team.
It's actually been signed now? Okay, great.
I hadn't heard an update on that, so that's great.
It sounds like so $5 million for roads and $750,000 for sidewalk gaps on top of our $500,000. So that's 1.25 million for sidewalk gap. That's not a small amount of money.
Right.
And then my other question, and yeah, that's great. That's why I asked. I wanted to make sure that that was final, so great. Is when do we look at trails and is that only your department or do we also bring in Greg?
No, I think we bring in Greg and I've actually had a couple of conversations with the deputy supervisor too about bringing some folks in from the outside, from the community to sit in on that and strategize a bigger trail program. But yes, definitely leisure service. I've talked with Greg. He's aware that this program's coming before you tonight and knows that the trails are a piece of the connectivity. But this one was about the sidewalks and clearly we're making some connections even with the sidewalk program or the sidewalk projects that we have outlined. But we'll continue to work with them and get that meeting scheduled so we can continue to look at that trail map.
Yeah, that's good.
And actually, we, Patrick, we've been working on some trails down in the ITC corridor on the west side of the township with the Cherry Hill Village priority and looking at what to do down there. So we have some preliminary sketches for how we could actually get all the way connected to the west side. I think we still have a gap somewhere in the middle, which you're working on. But we are working on to complete that trail from a planning standpoint so we can go to ITC one time and request permission and get that all designed.
One thing I've been thinking about, I talked to Michael about it, Kate and Michael the other day, was ITC to the south and connecting into the border-to-border trail somewhere like in Belleville or something like that. I know that they'd have to reach, come up to us, but-
And they're near Geddes too. They're right over the border in Washna.
Well, the one in, the trail on Geddes, I don't think is part of border-to-border. That was more private, I think. Greg or John LaFever told me that that's not, doesn't connect you really to border-to-border. That border-to-border is more south of there in Ipsy and we have to look at the map. But then when Michael and I were looking at the map, we said, well, what about the ITC trail going south of where it ends now? Because there's more ITC. And the only issue is something small called I-94 that you run right into, but yeah. But just brainstorming and planning for the future kind of stuff.
Another thing is Victor's not here, but he had asked that we keep in mind when we're doing major roads or even side roads because he wants to do circles of broadband infrastructure around the township. So while we have the patient open, we should look at where he wants to add the broadband. And that includes even sidewalks. You know, if there's a sidewalk gap, a large one, if we can put some infrastructure under there. And so make sure he's really-
I talked to him a little bit about that, you know, the concept with broadband, but yeah.
He's starting to develop the rings and you had given him a map the other day of where AT&amp;T and WOW have their broadband.
I sent some information on the, on the Ford, on their conduits, right?
So there's definitely some gaps he'd like to fill with you.
I, you know, I think by the end of this year, I hope to have a better handle on these 273 locations. And I do want to point out one other thing. When we evaluated all of these gaps, and I got to call attention to Erica because of what Erica did over the past 10, 15 years, she eliminated all the easy ones. She found all of the locations where she could get a sidewalk in without getting easements. So kudos to Erica and-
The team's done a great job. Patrick and Aaron, Erica, good job.
So we're stuck with all the ones where we have to get agreements, but that's a good thing, you know?
So you're going to assimilate this and then set up priorities, but are we, I mean, are we starting to work on some anyway? I mean, obviously we're doing sidewalk repair, but-
Right. We've got those two ITC ones already awarded. I would like to, when we bid for further consultants on some of these other projects, we'll have a number of these started, you know, hopefully this summer. And also narrowing down the 8.7 miles within the school zones. We really have to go through all of those and then start to attack them one by one. It's a pretty monumental task. We're going to do quite a bit of that in-house, you know, and not, Jade and I have talked. I'm going to do a lot of the conceptual stuff in-house, turn it over to the consultants for more of the survey, basic design. But Erica and I have talked quite a bit about, we get those base maps, we lay it out and then have the consultant do their part. Not completely piecemeal, but I don't necessarily need them spinning their wheels when I have a staff that can conceptualize these sidewalks better than most of our consultants. I will say that.
Thank you. Tanya?
Yeah, I just want to echo first of all everyone's view here that this was phenomenal. Like it was so, the report was so well-done and it had everything in it. I know there's way more substantial data than that actually went into the report. And hopefully, you know, you're going to get into it more, you know, delve into it more in the next six months. So maybe we expect something in the early next year and then go from year to year from there. Because this is the initial problem, but you're going to define more.
I think we'll have an interim update, but I think I would see this exact study session occurring every year. Like, because that's about the time we do the roads every year. Because then, I mean, Bill already alluded to, we're designing roads for 2024 and coming to you for approval. So we've got to make sure that we're on top of this. So I would see like this study session being roads and gap approvals and probably trails at that point too. If we want to intermingle a gap with a trail at the same time, we can have one big discussion with maps and say this is the priority for the next year or the next two years.
You know, one thing Jade, I would say, we're going to have two main construction designers. One to do your standard gaps throughout the community and then one for trails and bridges. Bridges on trails, but also bridges along sidewalks. They're unique construction projects. And what I was thinking is we would, we would bid for the trail and bridge guy, we'll bid the two trails and the four bridges and we'll get a feel for what the consultants are going to give us on those types of projects. Same with the sidewalk gaps. We will bid some of these projects to our consultants and also get some generic costs from them so we can look forward, what will my gap engineering be for next year? So by looking at actual projects that they will have to bid on, we can compare the consultants on real locations and then select probably one for civil design and then one for trails and bridges. And then one for right-of-way and easement acquisition. That's going to be a separate contractor.
One thing, and it's relevant to this discussion because we're talking about school-
One thing, and it's, it's relevant to this discussion, because we're talking about schools and prioritizing gaps around schools, but while we do that, you know, there's been a lot of, there was a lot of discussion, I think, in the beginning of the year from individuals coming to Plymouth Township, the school board here, talking about pedestrian safety around the schools. And, and so having sidewalk is one thing, but there's a couple of unique situations in Canton with some of our elementary schools in particular, where you do have walkers who cross three-lane roads, like Morton-Taylor or, or Lilly. For Halsing, there's a situation where young children from the west side of Morton-Taylor, those neighborhoods, will, will, will walk to, to Halsing, and they will cross a mid-block crossing that is really only identified by two stripes in the road. There's no traffic calming measures, there's no light indicating that there is a crosswalk there. There's no fixtures or features in the road kind of hinting to people to slow down, you know? Canton is definitely a community built around the automobile, and everything about it tells you that. If you try to ride a bike, you know very quickly, this community was not designed for people who ride bikes. If you try to walk, not just Ford Road, this community was not intentionally designed for walkers, bike riders, or for that matter, young children walking to schools. But now we have 98,000 people in a 36-square-mile area, and we have those situations where you have young students crossing Morton-Taylor Road. And we were intentional about putting hawk lights at the ITC trail. And I would really love it if we could engage our county partners, specifically our county commissioner. If we're going to be closing these sidewalk gaps, should we be intentional about trying to put in hawk lights near the elementary schools in particular, where the students are having to cross a three-mile road? Whether it's Halsing and Morton-Taylor by Warren, or whether it's Sheldon Road, I'm sorry, Lilly Road south of Cherry Hill, could field? Because that's also not a very safe place either. Now, I know hawk lights aren't cheap, but I do know they're effective. They are probably the most effective way to, 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 to signal to traffic. You know, they have, they have crossing guards, but again, it's just, it's, you know, you have, you have 98,000 people, you have 45 mile-an-hour speed limits in Canton Township, and the right-of-ways aren't, they're not complete streets. They're not safe for anybody that's not even in a vehicle. And if you go on Ford Road, it's not even safe if you're in a vehicle.
Yeah, Josh Meyer of the school security has put in a school safety grant, and it was rejected because the state said he was not an Act 51 entity. So he's come to the county, and we're trying to help them connect, to help get things like that, to get more safety equipment. Now, Wayne County did deny some of it in a letter that was sent about two months ago.
Yeah, the hot potato is going to be who pays, right?
Yeah, right. What they say they're responsible for.
Because it's probably not 100% grant, I would imagine. The county doesn't want to pay for it.
No.
I would just say we have to keep talking to the school districts.
Yeah.
It's, it's hard to say.
And I imagine the schools don't want to pay for it either. So, yeah, that's going to be, I mean, this is, this is, this is all, this is why Kurt Heisey sent all of those parents to Canton Township.
Yes.
You know?
Right.
This is, this is the game we play, right?
The gaps are on his-
Everyone knows the game.
They wrote a resolution and sent them to us, but we are taking action.
Right.
Canton is taking action.
And we will meet, now that this has been presented to you, this hasn't been presented to anybody. So now we can actually go talk with Josh and the schools and say, okay, here's our official plan, and here's, you can see our first priority is schools, so how can we work together? I, I just had another note that, just like our roads program, this program here will grab the attention of, they're like, oh, Canton's actually serious about this. They actually put work into it. So, you know, neighboring communities, the county, other, when we apply for grants, we actually have something already presented that can go with a grant application to show, hey, give us some dollars. So this is going to work in a, in a way that will, will help us obtain more dollars, too, and make people think that, oh, yeah, they're, they are serious.
Well, and then ultimately, the, and we might need to put our money where our mouth is, too. And we might have to go to the county and say, you know, we'd fund 25% if you fund 25%, and we ask the state for 50%. And in that case, they might not say denied. They might say, oh, okay, that's legitimate.
Right.
Is this going on the website then?
Oh, it's not yet. I mean, I want, you guys needed to see it first. But yes, if you see any changes, let me know. But yeah, we do plan on putting this on the website and calling attention to our gaps and trails and, you know, the whole connectivity of, of the township.
Oh, I, I know, I had one more question. You didn't present it in your charts, but the crossing priority, like your scores for each of the 275 crossings and stuff like that?
In the appendix, there's a-
Yeah, in the appendix about that. So I didn't, I don't remember, you had so many different categories that you did with population and things like that.
Right.
It seemed like I hear a lot about the Palmer Road one, but that was not too high on the list, and so I was-
What's, when we ranked them, and, and our interns had done that last year, just based on a, you're looking at population, you're looking at trail connections and, and commercial areas, destinations. So his, their rankings were, if you look at, I think Cherry Hill was actually ranked, US 12 and Cherry Hill were ranked at the highest, because if you look at Cherry Hill in particular, it has that trail connection that we just fixed about two years ago. So you have that I-275 trail connection. Plus, at Cherry Hill, in that location, you know, you're, you have fairly well-built-out area. It's, it's fairly dense. So it's, it's subjective, you know? All of those types of things are. Certainly, Michigan Avenue is, is a big priority. It's a very difficult distance to, to get across.
But I also will say, we said it earlier, this is a working document, so those can change depending on what happened. And by looking at that chart, there's quite a few of those scores that can be, I don't want to use the word manipulated, but they, if the perceived use is it's higher than what it says on here, we can change that. And then also like available space, well, along Palmer, everybody just approved for us to go and acquire that property that's going to get us over the creek and extend that gap. Well, that just changed that score, too. So your scoring can change in a matter of minutes.
Scores were pretty close together.
Yeah, so, and I think it would be, it would not be, yeah, they're all within eight points of each other. So I think it's pretty even.
They're all important. They're all-
Ranking versus priorities is, those are two different things, really. You know, I mean, I, I think Copernick is a great opportunity, but it doesn't go anywhere. You go west, you go to Hagerty, and then you get to Hagerty, and it's all industrial, you know? But if you look east of that location, you've got a lot of density, and that's already connected.
Copernick is a pretty low-utilized road. I mean, when I'm biking on there, I don't feel perfectly comfortable being on the road itself, even going under the bridge there, so.
So all the talk about schools reminded me that either last year or the year before, I had come across the Safe Routes to School grants, and I just want to make sure that we're aware. But also, when we're talking to the school district, that we make sure that they're aware of that, that those are available also.
That's actually the grant that Josh applied for, that they didn't, they weren't eligible to apply, because they weren't an Act 51 entity.
Right, the major grant looks like it's communities, but the mini-grant that he could apply for is for, only for schools.
Yeah, I'll have to look into his, I, we were talking about this yesterday. I haven't seen his application yet, but we did hear that he did apply and it was denied.
Okay. It might be that they want not a school to apply for that, but a, a community.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else on the two topics?
I missed the roads part, but it looks good.
Thanks.
I wasn't invited to the roads committee meeting. No, I wasn't in that meeting.
He was accidentally left off, but-
I was accidentally left off, my feelings weren't hurt, so don't worry. I'm sure it was a very good meeting.
Purely accidental. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Let me look online, see if any public comment. So if you are online, you can raise your hand. Okay, come on, why isn't this? There we go. Public comment for any attendees, if there's five or six, any attendees, public comment? No public comment? Public comment, okay? Anyone in the room? No? Okay. The board, any more comments from the board? No? About staff, or the deputy supervisor, any comments?
No comment, thank you.
So traumatic.
All right, great. So the next item on the agenda is adjourning. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
A move, we adjourn.
Motion made by trustee Stein, and supported by treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Great meeting, everyone, thank you.